All right.
I've got 20 seconds.
I'd like to call this regular city council meeting, April 22nd, 2019, for order. Please call the rule.
Flora.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Kuz.
Here.
Bergeron.
Casim.
Isen.
Here.
Please rise for the pledged leaders.
My pledged leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Under Communications, we received some information in regards to electing a new council member and some information regarding a building permit for the Moose Book. Move us on to the person to be heard. First one is Donald Westlin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Don-- my council members. My name is Donald Westlin. I live at 15067 Lizzie Lane, 15 miles north of Tongus. I'm here tonight before you to talk about the library. In the Ketchikan Daily News, April 2021 edition, page A2, Public Works has requested $100,000 to repair the foundation of the library. They have also noted that other areas of the foundation is settling. How much more are we going to spend on this white elephant of a money pit of a library? The city, before building the library, was told there were voids, old cars, stumps, unstable ground, et cetera. Any smart builder would not have built a multimillion-dollar building on a side hill fill with voids, old cars, stumps, and unstable ground. There was a lawsuit that-- or there was a threat of a lawsuit if the property wasn't purchased. The city, I believe, did not do their due diligence and went and go to court and fight the lawsuit for undisclosed problems with the property. I was not given a voice on the location or the design of the building. I live in the borough. I was not fortunate to have a vote. I am forced-- I am forced to pay maintenance on a building that I do not own. Because my property value is high, I pay a higher portion of the maintenance. I should not have to pay for anything I do not use or own. In hindsight, the site that I would have chosen for the library would have been the old Lewis Chevrolet building. It's built on rock, solid rock, and it's on the-- it's on the bus line. The city wanted to take and keep the library in the center of the city. I don't think that on top of the hill is the center of the city. During the wintertime, bus service is a little bit vague up there. So I don't have a voice in this. You guys are going to spend what you're going to spend. I still have to pay. I don't think it's fair. So with that, I'll answer any questions. If not, I'll say goodnight.
Any questions? Thank you, Don.
See ya. Goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight, Don.
Next, John Clifton.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is John Clifton. I live at 8400 South Tongus, and I just want to thank you and encourage your continued support for your efforts on behalf of WISH, which is item number four under general government. So just thanks a lot. They do a good job and takes people like you to help them out, too. So, thanks.
Thank you, Don. Next, Stephen Reeve. Stephen.
Good evening, Stephen Reeve. I'm representing historic Ketchikan tonight. I live at number five Creek Street. I wanted to address a matter on your agenda tonight. You want me to do it now, or do you want me to wait until--
Well, you can say what you have now, and if we have questions, we'll ask you.
Okay. Well, historic Ketchikan has assumed the responsibility for most of our community's interpretive signage over many years, starting with the historic Ketchikan kiosk, the three-sided signs, now almost 30 years old, and moving on to walking tour signs and four-- three or four years ago, the colorful characters and places signs. And that's what's on the agenda tonight. I've laid out-- over the past year, historic Ketchikan, the Commission, KVB, and others got together to do a comprehensive signage proposal that would address all signage, colorful characters, interpretive signage, wayfinding signage, et cetera. We laid out a budget and the materials you have for all of those signs for the next three years or so. We saw it as addressing the most embarrassing of the signs first, and there are a lot of embarrassing signs out there that are damaged or dilapidated or whatever, and moving on to improving those signs. We understand there are budget limitations, and we've reduced our budget down to the kind of bare bones to get started. We intend to build upon the-- this initial grant and go after other sources, the borough included, and state grants and other things, to try to supplement what you may be able to fund tonight. The signs that we're doing are the colorful character signs. I know you're familiar with. These are an example of them. They were done in yellow cedar. There's 15 of them out there. We did them three or four years ago. They take a lot of work to put together. It isn't-- they aren't cheap. This was my design, and it wasn't very good. It was yellow cedar. We worked with the-- we worked with the shop class at the high school who produced these. We volunteered our time to do it. We did the research to-- I can show these to you folks, too. We did the research to produce these signs, and unfortunately, they take a lot of maintenance. Yellow cedar seems as well, but they still take a lot of maintenance to clean up. Our experience really with the historic Ketchikan kiosk, they've been in place for 30 years. It required very little maintenance. There's-- now we're getting to the point where they need maintenance, and that's what we'd like to move to, but they're expensive. They cost $2,000 to $2,500 per sign to do. So we can do it the inexpensive way and do something like this, but what's proposed before you tonight is using porcelain enamel and doing them the way it will sustain over many years with very little maintenance. The-- these things take time, though. It's like one of my favorites, for example, the Union Machine Shop. To pull that sign together, it took a lot of research, meeting with the four generations of the Bray family who are over there, Union Machine Shop, and it's a fantastic sign. People-- you see 10 or 12 people in the summertime. I end up looking at signs like that, and they're important for our heritage tourism. And I want to-- I want to be available to make any comments about signage costs, et cetera, when you get to that on the agenda, but to me and to historic Ketchikan, the key to dealing with increased tourism, increased visitors in this community, is getting them into our community, and we need to do things like interpretive signage, like completing the waterfront boardwalk and the crosswalks that enter our neighborhoods. We need to do these things to benefit from this and to manage this increased numbers. I have no doubt that we can manage them, but we need to do our work, and we haven't funded this enough in the past. Our focus has really just been front street, seaward, and we need to talk about front street toward the uplands. So that's my comment for this evening, and I'll be happy to respond later when you have a chance to take a look at this matter on the agenda. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. Agnes Moran.
Agnes Moran, I know you guys have seen probably more than your share of me, so I'm going to introduce my board chair, Allyze Claire. And again, I just want to be here if you have any questions, and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for all of your support thus far and moving forward with Community Block Development Grant with the Criff Building. WISH does great work in this town. I can't take any of that glory. They're just-- they're a great organization under Agnes' leadership, and in order to continue to do that work, it requires we have a good space, and our space is kind of tired, and so this new Criff space is really a great shift for us. So thank you for your support and all of that.
Thank you. So that's the end of the list. Is there anybody else in the audience that wants us to speak today? Anybody else? All right, seeing none, that'll move us on into the consent agenda. In regard to that, I would like to move item 7A2, Budget Transfer for the Berthoud Rock Pinnacle. Item 7A7, Purpose of the Two Vehicles for the Police Department. And 7B1 and 2.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none, would you please call the rule? Yeah, why don't you read the items?
Approval on the minutes, regular city council meeting of April 4th, 2019, award of contract number 1923, janitorial services for the Tongus Historical Museum and the Tota Heritage Center, HB88 Janitorial Services, agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the University of Elaspen Southeast, administration of the Ketchikan Campus Library, signatory authority, Community Development Block Grant for Design of Renovations to 623 Gateway Court, former Ketchikan Regional Youth Facility, Resolution Number 192734, supporting the Fair Housing as it relates to the federal housing law, title of seven of the 1968 Civil Rights Act, Community Development Block Grant for Design of Renovations of 623 Gateway Court, and Resolution Number 192735, affirming the city's equal opportunity and affirmative action policy, Community Development Block Grant for Design of Renovations to 623 Gateway Court. Amendment Number 3 to Contract 1735, Design of Berthoud 1 and 2 Expansion Moffett and Nickel, exempting the procurement of annual support services of the Telecommunications Division 4G LTE Network from competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code ERICSON HEAK, exempting procurement of annual internet bandwidth connection and distribution of the now of services, DDoS protection services, from competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code NTT Communications, a budget transfer for Amendment Number 4 to Contract 1716, planning and permitting for the removal of the Berthoud Rock Pinnacle Moffett and Nickel, 2019 Police Department Vehicle Acquisition Kendall Ford, exempting the procurement of additional interim systems administration and engineering services for the Telecommunications Division from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code JPM Consulting, and a budget transfer exempting the procurement of voice switch cards and equipment from the competitive written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code Ribbon Communications.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please call the rule.
Isen?
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Zingy, yes. Kuz.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Right. Thank you very much. That brings us down. There's a lesson under unfinished business. It's a new business. Item 7A1, 2018, 2022 Ketchikan Public Library Strategic Plan Update.
Oh, good evening, Mayor Seaberton and members of council. I'm Pat Colley. I'm Director of the Ketchikan Public Library, and I'm here to report on the implementation of our strategic plan during the first quarter of 2019. The report is in your packet, so I'll just hit a few of the highlights. The first strategic goal is that to make the library a welcoming, beautiful, and inviting place, and one very successful program we had last quarter was the March 9th gardening mini-conference. Lisa Pearson worked with Marzette Ellis to hold an all-day conference, featuring sessions on beekeeping, best practices, southeast-friendly edible plants, and the annual seed swap. We had over 80 people attend one or more sessions, so we felt really good about that. And I don't know whether this is actually contributing to the beautiful and inviting space, but coming up on May 25th, we were contacted by researchers from Radford University in Virginia. They are-- they have selected Ketchikan to do a program on Madagascar hissing cockroaches. They're going to bring the cockroaches with them, and kids will be able to, like, touch them and hold them and that kind of thing. And the reason they chose-- the reason they chose us is because one of the grand-- or one of the researcher's grandmothers had come to Ketchikan on a cruise, and she-- so the grandmother said that this would be a very nice place to hold this program. So that's going to come up on May 25th. So our second strategic goal is to serve the Ketchikan community. Just a few highlights. The Children's Community Garden Series started up again this March with planting scheduled for mid-May, and we already have some plants started and under grow lamps in the children's library. And the Teen Advisory Group Program Series called Next Real Life continued this semester, and the final program on campus student resources took place just last week. Kelly Johnson and the Teen Advisory Group are working with Keihai and Revilla to plan a new series of programs to begin next school year. Our third strategic goal is to engage with the community. So this past quarter, the AARP Tax Aid Program, it began in February and ran through mid-April. The trained volunteers who came in twice a week to help people do their taxes were absolutely wonderful, and I know their work is very much appreciated in the community. And our Friends of the Library have been busy with one-day book sales on January 19th and March 16th, and a few weeks ago, the Friends and the Library Advisory Board held a joint meeting to celebrate the year's accomplishments, and we were honored to have Councilperson Judy Zingy as our featured speaker. So thank you very much. And our fourth and final strategic goal is to make the library a growing, vibrant organization. So a few of the organizational changes were that our Head of Children's Services, Amanda Kylie, stepped down in March. For the past 12 years, Amanda has done an outstanding job in children's services, and she'll be deeply missed both by staff and by our patrons. Anne Marie Marisone is acting Head of Children's Services, a role she took on back in December of 2018 when Amanda went on maternity leave, and Anne Marie is doing a really great job. And in January, we welcomed Rebecca Brown to the staff as our new outreach librarian. Rebecca has been very busy establishing new book shares, which are kind of take-a-book-leave-a-book self-service bookshelves at Green Bean Coffee Path in the Warming Center and at WISH. Rebecca has also distributed brochures at local medical offices to attract new people to outreach who are either temporarily or permanently homebound, and she's working closely with local senior centers. And as I said before, these are just a few of the many things the library's done in the past quarter. We have a link to the full quarterly report on the library's website in our About Us section. And finally, I'd like to again thank the council and everybody at the city for your support of the library and our work for the people of Ketchikan. So, any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead, Sam.
I was just in Denver visiting my granddaughter, and I went to their local library in their neighborhood, which is actually very similar to our library, and they had a baby sign language class.
Oh, my gosh. That's awesome.
And that was like so fun.
Yeah.
I think the babies were picking up on a lot of-- but the parents and the grandparents were learning a couple of things.
Sure. Oh, that's lovely.
It was-- it was very engaging, and it was really a positive thing.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
They're doing a sign-- they're thinking about doing a sign language class up at the library on a Saturday, so if anybody-- I don't know when they're doing it. When are they starting?
Yeah, I'll have to look. I don't know exactly when that's happening.
Because I was like, ooh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not baby, but--
So that brings us down to item 7A3, appraisal of 319 Main Street, Old Fire Station Number One, intra-early resources.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the City Council to direct the City Manager to take such action regarding the disposal of the city-owned property located at 319 Main Street, Old Fire Station Number One, as determined appropriate by City Council.
Been moving second to duty.
I just think we need to move forward with this and get it going.
This is Julie.
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to amend the motion to include that we should start the process of having an outcry auction and begin the auction at half the appraised value. I honestly don't think it'll go for that, but I think it would create a lot of interest, and we'll probably see it go for well over the appraised value, but I'd like the auction to start at half the appraised value.
Have you made that a formal motion?
Yes, I would amend Judy's motion to-- the amendment would be to proceed with an outcry auction, starting the bid at half the appraised value.
I'm not hearing a second.
Can I amend that to start the bid at the appraised value?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Go ahead.
Okay, and I do think it will-- that we're going to get at least that appraised value. I am happy to hear what-- I was happy to hear the appraised value was 300, 300-something thousand. I don't have it right in front of me, but yeah, that's okay with me, and I would like to see us do an outcry auction, and this is a great time of year to do it. Advertise it in California, Washington, Oregon.
Anybody else?
I think the outcry auction is a great idea. I would like us to move forward on this. So $6,000 in 12 weeks later, we ended up $15,000 within the assessed value, which some of us wanted to just get going back then. So that's all I'm going to say about that, but why don't we move forward and have an outcry auction for the appraised value and not a dime less to start. We can always go down from there.
This is Julie. I just want to say one more thing. I believe that none of us really knew what the appraisal would come in at. I think it was money well spent now, but looking at it after the fact, and I think it surprised a lot of us, so I'm just glad to move forward on it also.
Thank you. Judy?
So I'm not even going to comment on the appraisal part of it at all, but an outcry auction, Carl, is that something we can just move on? Do we have the ability to go ahead and do that? I just want to-- I don't want to delay this any more than we already have. I'm going to have to defer to the City Attorney.
An outcry auction's not something that I'm aware of the city ever done before, so it takes some time to get that in place from the ground up. I understand that the borough's done it before, and I can see where there may be some potential advantages to the city where you have any of a number of parcels, and from what I was told, the borough was all raw land. I mean, we could do it here. The council wants some financial information and whatnot that have to be pre-qualified in some way, so while the council may want to explore it in a larger context, my thought is, I don't know that this parcel is one to try it out on, although we certainly can.
Yeah, leave it at that.
To me, that seems-- I mean, I don't have a problem with the outcry. It just seems like it might be, if we've never done one, putting it together, but this building is not like the Criff Building where it has-- was designed for a specific purpose. This building, and I think even if you put it up with a realtor, is going to get people or put it out there for sale. I don't see this building not getting hit on. I don't. At 315 or 340,000, I don't see this one sitting. I see a lot of people who are interested in this building, and treating it like it's the Criff Building, which is a completely different animal, is doing it disjustice. It's just that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I can support an outcry auction. It doesn't matter with me which way it goes, how we do it. We get rid of it. We get rid of it at the appraised value, and we just get on with it. But I do have one question. Have we officially declared a surplus so we can do it and move, or we still got to mess with surplus in it? Are we done with that step?
Technically, Councilmember Kuz, I don't think we have declared it a surplus. I certainly can bring back a simple motion for the first meeting in May to do that, and in the meantime, we can start getting organized on the outcry auction.
Okay. So I guess if we're going to do it as an appraised value, I don't know why we just don't list it with the realtors and get it done. If somebody bites on it, none?
Sounds like a faster mechanism.
Right.
And I think the outcry auction may work very well for some of the properties that we have condemned and stuff going forward. It may not be as complicated as this piece of property that we have in front of us today. So I think I would rather see us move toward just outright, list in it, put it out there where we need to put it out there, and see if we can do to get it full. Mr. Burdrum?
Thank you. I agree with listing it versus an outcry auction, and the reason I do is I think that the building has some appeal to maybe some institutional clients, and I think an outcry auction, it would not be the best vehicle for them to purchase it. So I think that listing it with a realtor is-- would allow folks like that, whether they're nonprofits, whether they're other governmental entities, whomever that might be, to work with a realtor and not be-- I agree that we should sell it. I also agree that we should look at how we're going to deal with all of our surplus properties rather than reinventing the wheel every time out. So I think for this particular situation, I would like to, again, just list it with a realtor. Thank you.
I have a question. What-- how would we choose a realtor?
We list with all of them, right? I don't know how we do this.
I don't think normally you list with all of them. I think you have to select a realtor. You know, we could--
But request for proposals after the listing? I don't--
That's what you want, but that's going to take us probably much-- it's not more time than an outcry auction, but if the council is willing to do that, that's fine with us.
I think an outcry auction's cheaper than doing it with a realtor. They're going to charge us an arm and a leg, like they always do.
I do, too. I would agree.
Outcry auction's the best way for to get our money back and our value, and then we've got the experience.
Outcry auction. Outcry auction. Yes, Judy?
So usually what we do is we put, make it a surplus property, and then we put it out there for bids?
Normally, yeah, you do...
And how long would that take?
I think the charter has a specific timeline that you have to advertise it over the course of three weeks, and...
Well, it takes, you know, any method that's under consideration presently is gonna take an ordinance to, to take, to take care of it. Um, what we've done is in the past, I don't think there's a hard or fast rule that applies to the city, but our general rule of thumb is to give about three weeks of advertisement so that people can say they had a reasonable shot at it. Then those are submitted with seals, with the clerk can open at that point. As the sale documents, and as you'll recall here, we're gonna have restricted covenants on it, um, and the council also asks for, uh, information so that the financial wherewithal when any bidders could be taken into account, and the public works directors come up with a matrix on that that is...
Um, this is Charlie, can I say one more thing?
Julie, hold on a second.
Okay.
That, that was a previous discussion that the council had. My sense of tonight's discussion is right now, you wanna put the property out there for simple appraised value, and that's it. You don't wanna, like, tie the facade and preservation of the facade, or anything like that. How this is a simple...
Okay, well, that's news to me. The, it was appraised with the concept of there being restricted covenants.
So we have to make a decision yet on how we're gonna...
For the facade.
Just a minute. Julie?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that, um, that we don't need a realtor to move forward. We have the appraisal. Anyone purchasing it would have to get an inspection, and any lender would require certain things, but if, uh, okay, yeah, Janalee's got her hand up, I think.
That's what I was gonna ask, is we've never, you don't have to use a realtor, and, and you've done that before, but I honestly, I do wanna see that we have some covenants on the, um, for the sake of the historical piece of that building, um, you know, just keeping the facade, you know?
So, one of the things, one, one of the things I'm hearing here, of course, is we have a difficult time disposing of property. So when we talk about putting a request for proposals out there in regards to realtors, I don't know why we don't do it for a yearly contract or a two-year contract. They sell any of the properties that we get that are surplus, and we don't have to go through that. We just list it with them.
That's something similar to what the borough has done.
Yeah, and so I think that, that, where I'd like to see us move, and if we've already got the borough doing it, I, I think that bringing back a proposal such as that, um, makes a lot more sense, because we do have other properties that we probably want a surplus.
And maybe we need to do all of those at the same time, so that we're not...
Well, as they come up, or as we get clear title to them, I mean, we're not gonna get clear title to them all at once. Yeah?
Well, I, I still think we ought to try this outcry. We may find it's cheaper than doing it any other way, and once we find out what it takes, then we've got the experience, and we can, and we can do any property that way. Doesn't have to be go to the realtor. Just outcry, sell it.
Mark? From listening to the attorney and the manager, A, it sounds like the next step is bring back the motion to surplus the property. That's the time when we decide if there's gonna be covenants and restrictions or not, not tonight. Two, outcry delays this. Three, we're living this entire transaction out loud in front of the public. We've talked about price, we've talked about restrictions, we've talked to death. I agree with Councilmember Isom. I'm not really sure, in this particular case, what the value of a realtor is gonna do except add another layer of expense. We've already done it with the appraisal. It seems to me the fastest thing to do, let's come back with the motion to surplus, let's list this thing for the appraised value, and then let's see what happens. Because if that falls down, we always can choose another direction.
Carl?
Yeah, the city attorney is right. It has a value in excess of thirty thousand dollars. It will have to be done by ordinance, non-emergency ordinance, two readings. We can bring back the ordinance, um, probably for the second meeting in May, and we will resubmit the different, or the matrix, the different options of things you previously discussed about what you might wanna tie to the property, such as if you sign up, council can pick at that time and change the ordinance in the second meeting to reflect whatever it is that the council likes. That's the quickest way you're gonna get it done.
So Carl, do you, I, I mean, we've gone down to this path with property that we've ended up, does it make sense to do what the borough's doing and put out an RFP?
Yeah, we, we will take a look at that and bring something back, but I think the fire station is gonna have to stand on its own, and we'll, we'll treat that independently. But we certainly, yeah, I think there is merit to getting a, a realtor on board, similar to what the borough has done.
Thank you.
So...
So I guess, um, tonight, we've, we've come to the conclusion that, uh, we do have a motion on the floor to, to work with this, but we have to have a really to move forward. We should have a, a motion to surplus it first, and then come back with the appropriate information, and in regards to that, so, um, Julie, I think, I think at this point, I'd like to defer it until we have the motion to surplus before us.
Don't we have to...
I think it would be cleaner if the motion was just withdrawn.
Yeah, okay. So it would be cleaner if we just withdrew this motion, and then Carl will bring back a, a motion to surplus, and then we'll move forward from there.
And, and Mr. Mayor, at that time, the council will look through the options that...
Yes, and at that time, we look through the options in regards to the facade, et cetera, and the disposal. Correct?
Well, I, I'll need to have the, you know, the, the basic goal points of that before doing the ordinance, so I just wanted to be clear on the timeline.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So Julie, do you, um, wish to withdraw your motion?
Yes, based on everything you just said, I will withdraw my motion.
Is that, is that a due second?
Second withdrawal. That's on the amendment, then you made the original?
Yeah, I'll withdraw the original.
All right.
So you need a motion, though, to, to surplus it.
He's gonna bring us back. He's gonna bring us back all the way to the...
I'm gonna take care of it, okay.
So Judy, you're withdrawing the first motion?
Yep.
And second on that issue as well? Okay, so everything's...
Everything's...
Done.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
All right, thank you very much for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Okay, and as we bring back the motion to surplus, next time, we're gonna talk about how we're gonna dispose of it, whether outcry, or whether it's gonna be with a realtor.
Correct, and then what we attach to it in regards to the facade or other things.
Anything to it, if we want to.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I have one quick thing to add there.
Yes.
Okay, Carl, um, can we find out how the borough, um, acquired the services of a realtor, and how they went about doing that?
We'll treat the two separately, but yeah, we'll, we'll find out what the borough did, what procedure.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, that moves us on to 7A4, pending council vacancy, Council, uh, Member Julie Isom.
Your honor?
Yes?
I move city council, accept the resignation of Julie Isom from the position of council member, and direct the city clerk to begin the process of advertising for letters of interest from applicants to fulfill the remainder of the term.
A second.
Then moving second, Judy?
Um, I just think that this provides someone an opportunity to see if this is something that they wanna do, and then they can decide if they wanna run, not till, that's what we did before. This seemed to have worked for us sometimes.
Where's Mark's teacher?
So, Madam Clerk, what would be the process? You're gonna send out letters, right?
Well, the first step tomorrow would be sending an ad to the paper. We have to run it for seven continuous days, along with letters to the previous candidates that applied for that seat at the last election, which, um, Dragon and Spence...
Spencer Prosper?
Yeah, so we'll send letters to them, and then run a public notice ad, and, um, at the end of seven days, you get, you can, reading in past meetings, you can either schedule a special meeting and do interviews with these people, with an executive, with the applicants, and then an executive session. Or you, some of the meetings actually did it right before, it depends how many applicants we did, if there's only one or two applicants. Or you can throw it all out and start all over, and I can start the advertising process over. So, you can just do the ads, see what we get, you guys can review all the applicants, if you wanna hold a special meeting, some, and choose from that batch, or we can start over from that point, too. It's up to you. It totally up to you guys.
So, we have a fairly full agenda on the, is it the next meeting, the second?
Second meeting, or, I'm sorry, the May second meeting. There are a number of items that council members requested at the, the last meeting that will be before you...
Yeah, so we're probably looking at a, a special meeting, um, probably that, uh...
There's a calendar, a May-June calendar, is there?
Yeah, there is.
This, I can get one. It is, yeah. So, I'm thinking that the second week in May or something.
The second week in May probably works...
Because I can get the ads out seven days, take us to...
Twenty ninth, right?
Yeah, and then if, we'll have that meeting, and then we can...
So, uh, what's the preference on the week of the sixth through the tenth? Any preference on day?
Except Monday, 'cause Dave teaches...
Yeah.
The ninth again? Thursday?
You wanna do it on Thursday? I mean, that's been a meeting night that we've...
We're used to.
Please check your calendars, and we'll put that down.
What are we talking about, yeah?
The ninth?
The ninth?
Thursday.
May?
The second and the ninth.
I'm available for that meeting.
Awesome. And, and... Well, that's good to hear. So we'll, we'll put together, uh, you know, we'll, we'll give them an opportunity to, to speak and introduce themselves, we'll have a list of questions, uh, and if need be, um, I don't know if there's a need for an executive session, we'll put it in there in case there's questions the council members have about procedures, and then, uh, we would do it by ballot like we have in the past.
I'll do some ballots for each, and then we get whoever...
So, May, May, May ninth? Yep. 'Cause May tenth, I'm going to California. Well, May ninth, we got it. Yeah. All right.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Cuse?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Isom?
Yes.
Flor?
Yes.
Thank you. Brings us to item five. Uh, call for characters and places signed, uh, pilot program, contract number nineteen twenty-four, Historic Ketchikan Inc.
Your honor?
Yes?
I move the city council authorize the city manager to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from the appropriated reserves of the CPV Special Revenue Fund to the Tourism and Economic Development Department's Colorful Characters and Places signage pilot program capital account to fund the production of colorful characters and places signs. Authorize the city manager to enter into contract number nineteen dash twenty-four, Colorful Characters and Places signage pilot program between the City of Ketchikan and Historic Ketchikan Inc. at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, and direct city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Is there a second?
Second.
You second? Who in second? Judy?
Uh, I guess I have some questions about the type of signage, and, um, we have some of these signs around town now, and that was done by a local contractor. Would we be doing that again? Would we be using a local...
First of all, first of all, the sign that you have, Stephen, what is it, uh, what, what is it made of?
Uh, this sign, um, the yellow cedar frame was made by the shop class for us. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, sign itself was made by Sign Pro. It has a two, three, four-year life, it's a laminate on a metal backing, and that's the issue with this sign, it's, requires a lot of maintenance. Um, signs that Historic Ketchikan did for the kiosks were done on porcelain enamel, that's the way to go, but they're expensive, they last for twenty, thirty years without, with very little maintenance, and, uh, that's kinda the issue. We can, we can do it, we can do it more inexpensively if we want to, but it requires a lot of maintenance. Um, we've, we've been maintaining these signs for the last three or four years, uh, just as volunteers, and, um, but it's a couple of grand a year to, to do that at least, and, um, we were hoping we could, uh, have a consistent sign type, uh, for all of our signs, including, uh, the wayfinding signs, the colorful character signs. Uh, we need to, we need to replace some of the Historic Ketchikan kiosk signs that have bullet holes and among other, other issues. Uh, so we, we've, we've, we've come to believe that we really need to invest in, uh, a porcelain enamel-based sign that lasts for a long time with minimal maintenance. We think it's the most cost-effective in the long term.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, um, bullet holes in signs?
Uh, the one over on Whale Park has a bullet hole in it. Uh, the rest of them are in pretty good shape, they're beginning to fade a little bit, but they've been out there since nineteen ninety-one.
Great.
Twenty-eight years, and, uh, these, these require annual maintenance, um, uh, depending on their exposure. The Tatsuta sign, uh, on the old original grocery store, um, we need to do that every year. It's totally exposed the elements, and the, the, the sign, the, the, uh, the sign peels back, the, the yellow cedar needs renewal. Um, other signs that are, that are, uh, like, other places that are more protected are fine, they go for years. So it's, that's the issue, is, is exposure, and, uh, trying to, trying to invest in signs that are gonna last a while for us. Uh, the, the Historic Ketchikan kiosk signs have been great. As I say, they're twenty-eight years old, so...
So would you be, um, contracting or contacting at least Sign Pro to get a quote for these signs? Is it your intention to shop local?
Uh, we intend to do local if we can. They don't do porcelain enamel signs, they do this kind of signs. The same on the wayfinding signs, those are done by Sign Pro as well, and, uh, I know, Carl, you're dealing with that on a regular basis, the maintenance of those signs, they're, it's, it's, it's an ongoing maintenance issue.
But they would be able to contract out just as Historic Ketchikan would write together a porcelain sign? Well, Steve, you're here, are you able to bid on those? I'm just...
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, what's the cost of the vinyl for that sign?
What's the what?
Cost for the vinyl on that sign without, you know, I think that anybody that owns property in Ketchikan understands that if you're using wood, it's gonna be maintenance, so I think that if we could get away from wood framing, do with something, uh, metallic or just without a frame that looked really nice.
Yeah, yeah, we were, well, I, I provided you some of the options, we're looking at cor, corten steel on the outside rather than cedar. That was really my mistake. We got into, uh, a, a, a nice relationship with the school, they're, they were really interested in doing this. They look beautiful, uh, but they take us, they record us taking them down every year and working on them, and, uh, we can't do that all the time.
So if I may, Steve, could I ask you to come up?
Yeah, Steve. Yeah, here's the, here's the Sign Pro.
Here's the Sign guy, right? So tell us, tell me about the options in vinyl in regards to Ketchikan weather, and the type of materials that you can adhere them to for longevity, I guess.
Okay, well, these were done on, uh, it's a material called diabon, it's a, it's aluminum material with a, a plastic center to it. Um, they were, I don't remember, cost was a hundred, a hundred bucks a piece or something? Were they ten?
Uh, yeah, about a hundred bucks per insert.
Yeah, and that was, uh, so that, that, for these, the high school routed out the cedar part, and I write, they, they, they gave me the template, and I routed out the rest of them, and, uh, fit them in there, and, when did we do this?
It's been almost four years. Those fifteen signs that we did were thirty-five thousand bucks, including a bunch of volunteer time.
Really? All right. So, um, I'm guessing a lot of that's probably in the design or the layout of, yeah? So, which we, we didn't have anything to do with that part.
Yeah, that, the, the insert part was very inexpensive, the, uh, it's just that it doesn't have a long life, and you warned me about that.
They've, they've got about a, I, I, I guarantee them for five years.
Yeah.
For something like that. Um, I, there's, there's some vinyls out there that, um, the, uh, the manufacturer will give me a seven-year warranty. Uh, but that, I just follow the manufacturer's warranty. So, um, I've had signs up for, well, I'm replacing one right now that, uh, put up in ninety-eight that just now failed. So, so that's, uh, twenty-one years, which isn't bad for a vinyl sign exposed to the, to the element. So, it's got, it's got its durability. It is not as durable as porcelain by any means. Um, uh, as far as the, the wayfinding signs go, what's nice about those is you don't have to buy a new porcelain sign every time, though. Um, whenever, you know, the library moves or the, you know, some, some, something changes within the, the system, we can do a new map or a new, a new patch on those signs without having to do a twelve-week new sign for, you know, twenty bucks instead of, you know, two, two thousand dollars.
And that's kind of what I'm looking at here, you know, and I don't know how much, they probably wouldn't change much once you got them on a building and stuff, but at a hundred bucks a crack in, in, if you've got the metal backing, you know, there's twenty replacements over five years. You could be doing this for a long time. And, um, I just think that upfront the costs in regards to all the other expenses we're having now, I'd hate, I'd hate to have this project die because of the cost of a sign. Let's break that. I think that, uh, we have the ability with the fifteen thousand to do a lot more signs. I don't know how you, how you procure the backings and, and all that kind of stuff. And I know there's a component of getting all the information right and that kind of stuff. Um, but I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time just finding the two thousand dollars of signs with my own money.
Well, I, I would definitely go along with Steve's, uh, and that the yellow cedar is beautiful. It's great. But, and it's going to last for a long time, but it is obviously a maintenance sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I've got a problem with twenty-five hundred dollar porcelain signs. So, I, the signs are good, but I think we can, to me, we can go local and take one of those and do it a number of times. I also am concerned about using wood frames. We put a number of wooden things around this town that we never take care of them. And wood is nice, but it takes a lot of maintenance. And so, if we, we need to find something other than wood that, that has to be taken down, sanded and varnished every year, because that's just about what it boils down to in this weather. So, a frame other than that, I guess I'd also be tempted, depending on what kind of frame you come up with, putting an arch on the top of that sign is probably adds a lot of expense to it. If it's just a square sign, it makes a lot more sense to me. It provides the same information. It keeps the picture there. It keeps the information. So, if we can get this down to where, say, Steve or somebody locally can put that type of sign together with a more durable frame than wood, why, I can support it. Otherwise, I, I'm not, I can't support it.
So, how long would the por- uh, porcelain sign last versus the, the seven years, which then saves you about...
So, so porcelain is, uh, is a baked on process onto a metal frame. So, it all depends on, um, how well that's treated, too. You know, if somebody comes up and starts thing, you know, yeah, it can start rusting. But they're tough. I mean, uh, there's still signs out there you see around that are fifty, sixty years old that are the old, uh...
That haven't been touched.
Yeah, yeah, the old, you'll see them on the old, uh, gas station signs and things like that that are porcelain signs.
So, we could spend two thousand dollars on a sign and if we average that out over a fifty-year period, we're actually paying less for the signs.
I wouldn't guarantee it.
Well, I mean...
But, yeah.
No. And they have a fading issue just like anything else that's in the period type.
But then you just patch that, right?
You cannot patch the porcelain.
Okay, that's, you said something about patching as well.
Uh, yeah, patching on the vinyl, can you, can do patches and things like that with it, but not the porcelain. Um, because it's, uh, it's a printed process.
They're not necessarily married to any, any material. What we wanted to do, what, what we are married to is wanting to do, um, at least forty colorful character signs in the downtown, in Newtown and other places. We want to move on and, and upgrade some of our Historic Ketchikan kiosks. We want to move on and do other signs. So, so part of this front-end money, the seed money that you'd be doing, is sorting out with people like Steve who know a lot about signs, what is the right process? What are, what are, what are we going to do and what is cost effective? And, um, and, and this is seed money to, to resolve those design issues really and move forward. So...
Well, the problem is that this particular motion didn't give us any options except for porcelain signs moving forward.
Now, in, in the background materials that we provided, uh, we, we wanted to be clear that this is a design process right now. A front-end thing, we've got to work with, uh, with people like Steve and figure out the best, the best approach to it. We wanted to, to, to not overstate what we could get done, though, because part of doing signs is economy of scale. If we do one or two at a time, it's going to cost a lot more. If we do fifteen at a time, it's going to cost a lot less. So, that's where we are.
Judy, Mark, and then Dick.
I really agree that we need a lot of signs. I mean, we could, we could certainly use more signage in this town, but, um, I believe that where city dollars are being requested, um, we should design, contract and make accommodations for local businesses all the time, every time.
You bet.
That's what I'm married to. So, although I support having signage, what I support is our local businesses. And I think that every time we do work like this where people are requesting money from us, that should be a main consideration every time.
We totally feel the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
Well, that was my question, actually, was for some clarity. Do you have this fifteen thousand dollar budget and plan prior to Mr. Locklear's input tonight? Had you gone to him with this project?
Uh, say, say again.
Had you gone to Mr. Locklear with this project prior to his input tonight?
Yeah, not for this particular proposal, but we've worked with Mr. Locklear for years and we can, want to continue to work with him. We totally believe in local, in, in local production of all of these, all these. You can, that's true of all the stuff we do, whether it's out town or anything else, it's local. I think you know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I would suggest that we defeat this motion and suggest that Steve bring back us another proposal that's working with signs like this without a wooden frame to us to review. And you can sell me signs you can get out of it or whatever at that point in time. The other thing I've got a concern about is CBP money. I will not support this coming out of CBP, so the manager needs to figure out where it's going to come from.
Kelly?
Oh, that was, I was going to ask, this would fit under the PVC.
Yeah.
Why say PVC pipe?
It's, it's my, it's my opinion, Councilmember Gage, that CPV funds are in appropriate use. I understand Councilmember Kuz's concerns, but as we talk about getting the numbers of people that we're projecting, signage is going to require a comprehensive approach. It's there for the benefit of the passengers coming off those ships. Uh, and I think it's consistent with the use of CPV funds. Ultimately, council will have to give direction how, how you want to handle that. If you don't think CPV is an appropriate use, then likely you're looking at public works sales tax funds. And I, I think CPV funds is, is appropriate for this, this type of activity.
Sam, then Judy.
First of all, I, I think signage is a wonderful idea, but the issue that I have generally is, is what are we doing comprehensively? How is this a part of a greater uplands development? Who's responsible for the messaging on these signs? Who reviews it? Um, are all aspects of the community represented on these signs? And of course, I want to shop local, but at the same time, we have this uplands development that we need to do. And it's like selling the fire station. We're kind of jumping around all over the place here. Mr. Manager?
We have a lot of irons in the fire. Um, I think it is critically important, you know, I don't want to have to duplicate the efforts of Historic Ketchikan in designing these types of signs. They do a very good job, but it can't be hit and miss when it comes to ownership and maintenance. I think these signs have to come to the city, be owned by the city, maintained by the city in conjunction with Historic Ketchikan and other interested parties. Um, but we can't take the approach that, well, one year we're going to apply for a grant. If we get the grant, we're going to do this much. We've got to be able to have the ability to respond each and every year to the signage that's out there and prove it when necessary, um, revise it when necessary. We're not going to be able to do that unless these signs are owned by, by the City of Ketchikan. That, that's my bottom line in all this. That's the goal I want to work towards. And I'm looking for council support for that, because you're never going to be able to integrate it into the other uplands activities that we know we have to do if we don't own them. It's, it's that's...
Okay, okay. Okay, Judy, did you have something?
Um, I just wanted it to be clear that my understanding of this is, um, is design mostly. Is that, that's what this was about? They brought this forward is to make, to work on the design activities of this project.
Yeah, because we pared down the cost to this level, it, we have to do the front-end design work. We'd work with people like Steve to sort out materials. We get the, we, as we've done with these in the past, we have a review process. We need to go through with Historic Commission and other people and get the message right. So, that's the front-end cost where we, we have to address with this money. So, we're not going to be able to produce as many signs as we'd like to do for this level of funds. But we will go after other funding sources. I know, I, I agree totally with Carl. It's tough to, 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 to do projects like this on a piecemeal basis, but we'll go with the seed money. We'll go to the borough. We'll go to grant sources that we're used to going to. And there's a lot of private sector people, First Bank and others, who would love to have a sign on the building. They're, they're an amazing, they're amazing historical piece, that building. And, um, we'll, we'll find a way to fund, fund these projects. We just need to get the design down and get it right. And we'll work with Steve to do that. One thought I had from your discussion tonight is maybe we come back to you, uh, with even more definition of, of, uh, sign design approach and see what you think. Or you can, or you can have confidence in us that we're going to move ahead in the right way and we'll come back to report to you. So, however you prefer.
So, from what I'm hearing tonight, there, there's, um, a need or an interest for the city to be involved in regards to, uh, the ownership and maintenance and ongoing funding that signage can take home to the community. And that's going to be part of the bigger upland development of the entire city. Um, and so I think that we need to maybe move back to a point, and then the borough also has some regulations on regulating signage, if I, so there's, there's more parties at play than just the city and, uh, Historic Ketchikan. So, at this point, uh, rather than move this motion forward, I'd rather see, uh, forehand to have the, the manager work with Steve and Steve and whoever else in order to bring this project back with a scope and design, um, that is, I think, more than the approach that the city council is looking for. Yes?
So, this motion, wasn't it for just for doing that, putting it together or...
No, this was for the actual design and the purchase of some porcelain signs. And, and there's nothing in regards to the city's ownership, maintenance, ongoing project. Uh, because this is bigger than just four, five, six signs. Steve knows that. We got wayfinding, signage all over the community that I think is, is very important. And I want to make sure that we do it in a manner that's consistent with whatever our uplands plan is, uh, as we move forward with, uh, the core project and upland planning. Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, getting back to my original comment about a, a comprehensive approach, not only to way signage, but the uplands development. You know, I don't want to abdicate, um, what we're doing with signage or with our uplands development. And, and I think it's, it's, uh, it's a hugely important thing that we're doing. I mean, I appreciate the work that you're doing and what your entity is doing, but I think that there's more out there than what your perspective is. And so, I want to make sure that on signage and things like that, that we have a fair representation of the community. I mean, I don't know from if that's being met here or not. Um, I'd like to see, uh, all the signs. I mean, if you're going to be putting up signs, I'd like to see in my packet what these signs are, what the verage is, where they're going.
I think we did that, Sam. We gave you the fifteen signs in your packet and then the ones proposed for Newtown and all of the options for downtown.
Right, I get that, but I still don't get what the comprehensive signage approach is generally from this. Um, so, that's kind of what I need to get, get a handle on. I certainly appreciate the manager's comments about wanting to own them. My thought would be, as far as the signage goes, is that, uh, they are not twenty-five hundred dollars. They are easily, uh, corrected, replaced. Uh, we certainly have the ability to do that right here in town. We certainly have the ability to put them up and take them down and to modify them. Um, so, things change. Uh, even buildings change. And so, I, I would not pre- prefer to see a very expensive, long-term sign, because I don't think that, um, that's the best approach. Um, but again, getting back to the uplands development and to the signage, I, I, I want to see what's going on there. I want to see what our plan is and how this, you know, goes, goes into that whole approach. And so, right now, we're just doing things here, things there, and I'm not seeing the big picture. I want to see the big picture. That's all I got.
So, I think at this point, it would be appropriate for us to, to move forward in a manner that gets the manager's office involved, uh, gets a, a better conceptual thing. I think the program is great. Uh, I don't want to necessarily have a motion to defeat it, but, uh, if you would withdraw your motion and then we move with forehands to have Steve, Carl and, and whoever the other interested parties are to move forward with a, a overall plan.
Yeah, no, I could throw my motion. I think that makes sense, Steve.
And who is the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, again, the overall plan?
Yeah, that's what, that's, that's, yeah, and we, we know there's a bigger plan coming for the upland development of the community of Ketchikan, which all the downtown players, Historic Ketchikan, everybody's going to be involved in, because, uh, we have an increased passment account. We have, uh, flow issues. We have, uh, places we want them to get to. And it's going to take a, a combined effort by the community to make that work, not only for the Cusinian district, but more importantly, for the community itself. I think that's what we're looking at. Okay. Dick?
Yeah, I, just a comment. I, I guess I'm going to probably disagree with Carl. I don't think the city needs to own these signs. I don't think we ought to be involved in maintaining them. I think we can help deal with them, but we got a volunteer outfit that's willing to maintain them. And we got enough going on without having our maintenance guys run around taking care of signs. So...
That's a discussion they can have. That's a discussion they can have.
They can have it, but I mean, I, I'm just on the, I'm just side defense from Carl that time.
So, do I have forehands to give Carl? Carl, you got directions?
I think we've got direction for starting.
Steve, thank you very much.
Excellent.
And Steve, thank you very much. So, that brings us down to, um, budget print, Ketchikan Public Library Column Repair.
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
I move the city council authorized city manager to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from appropriated reserves of Community Facility Development Fund to the library department's two thousand nineteen foundation remediation capital account to address the settlement issues associated with the southernmost stone column of the facility.
Second. Moving second. Dick?
I really don't have much to say. I could agree with part of what, um, Don said about the location, but that's, uh, past history. So, we're going to have to deal with what we got and take, take care of the best we can. And we need to do it before something worse happens, so.
Mark, do you have anything to add? So, apparently they're going to connect this to the main slab to keep it at least in the same parameters as the building.
Yeah, Mark Killson, Public Works Director, uh, essentially, yes. They're connecting it to the foundation of the main part of the building.
Okay. Yes, Dick?
Mark, do we know, have any idea what's moving?
Uh, yes, we've been monitoring this for some time. So, um, the side of the building along the embankment, as you can imagine, that, that side's moving the most. Um, we're continuing to monitor it, but it's, it's moved about two and a half inches.
Is there any solution to stabilizing it?
That's a, that's a tricky question. There's always, always solutions with time and money.
Mark?
So, when I first saw this, I contacted the Public Works Director. Please correct me if I'm wrong, because the very first thing I started thinking was, it's not that it's not that old. Who's responsible and what's our warranty? And then Mr. Hilson informed me that prior councils, the public know, understands this. Prior councils were given several options and chose one with the caveat that settlement might be an issue. Is that correct?
Correct. Four, four options were presented. They chose option number two, which was a little more robust than just the traditional strip and spread footing option with the caveat, as you mentioned, that settlement would, would occur.
So in other words, we got what we picked. Okay? I agree with, a lot with what Mr. Westlin says, but that being said, I don't see how... Even though, even though the, the prior decision seems to have fallen a little bit short, I don't see how we don't protect the investment at this point. What do we do? Not fix it and allow more settlement? I imagine there might be a time when we or a future, future council are talking about another settling issue. We've got to keep the building intact.
Thank you. Sam?
So maybe we need to look into what we need to do in order to stop the settling or the moving of the building, considering that it is on that cliff? Like, what would be the potential costs of securing that? And I agree with Mark. I mean, I get that we built a building, now we have a building that could potentially just, you know, if we let it just go, it's just going to fall apart. And that, that's not logical to me. And with the number of people that use it.
So your question for me is?
Well, I guess, or to Carl, like, what would, what can we look at instead of waiting ten years down the road or twenty years down the road when we have a major issue? What do we need to do now so that it doesn't become more expensive to fix?
Yeah, I, I think that that's a good point. We've started, along with the monitoring, we've started investigating some repair options. Back when the building was designed, the repair option of choice at that point was pressure grouting. So that's still being investigated. So there'll be more to follow on that potential option. There, I do have quite a few technical questions on that and its applicability in this case, along with what are the impacts to the operations of the library? So, you know, this, the, the settlement, the ultimate settlement repair, which we believe to be still years out, not, not this year, could be quite substantial. That's my fear.
Well, even putting in a cement wall on that, would that even?
Well, you know, people do think of, of the library as, as moving, moving down the hill. And really, really, it's moving, it's moving down, but not shifting horizontally in any substantial manner. So it's, it's, it's settling downward, but not moving horizontally.
But things are going right?
It, ground's moving down.
That's not spreading?
No.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor? Any more discussion?
I have, I have some questions. So this is a hundred thousand? A hundred thousand well spent, Mark?
I think we're going to get it done for quite a bit less than that for this one column. And I think it is well spent because what we're seeing is that there's some, there's some damage beginning to occur. So the, the rain gutter's a little twisted, there's some sheet metal that's a little buckled up there. This is immediately adjacent to the window wall. So we have to make sure that we, we take the load of the roof and the beams there to this column and not to that window wall. So I do firmly believe that this is, this is money well spent. We, we need to do this. We also looked at options like, well, just take the column down to Rock. Take it down further and anchor it. And then that one's done and the whole rest of the back of the building, we could do at a later date. The problem with that, according to the design engineer of record, the structural engineer, is that you could wind up with that column standing proud as the, as the rest of the library settles. So it's more important to bring it back up to the same elevation as every, as, as the most, you know, the adjoining structure, tie it back into the rest of the footing. And, and, and then it's on even par with where the rest of the building is at right now.
So the library itself is built on a slab, a floating slab? What, what kind of foundation is it?
So the, the, the foundation is basically stem wall, strip footings. There's some grade beams for the interior columns. So instead of spread footings for the interior columns, there's just one continuous concrete strip. But the nine or so columns around the perimeter, those are all on spread footings, five by five, by memory.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Please call the board.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Isa?
Julie? Are you still there, Julie?
I'm here. You didn't hear me? Oh, I was on mute. Sorry.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
All right. So that brings us now to vouchers, which we have none. Manager's report, Carl?
Just a couple, Mr. Mayor. With your indulgence, if I could call on the Porton Harbors director to come up to the podium. Apparently why you and I were at a CECON meeting this afternoon, CECON distributed a proposed traffic routing associated with the construction along the Port of Ketchikan. And apparently that has raised some concerns and necessitated some action, which I'm going to ask the Porton Harbors director to summarize for you.
Porton Harbors director, Steve Corperon. There's already been some structural issues down there by Mission in Front. And CECON had told us last week that the Mission Street crosswalk probably won't be open until mid-May at the earliest, probably a little bit later. They also have some structural issues now down at Front and Mill. And they're going to be having to close that area down for probably about a week.
Right, Mark?
Our first ship is on Saturday. It's the Ruby Princess. Normally that's a berth four ship because it was just a one-ship day and their hours were a little more extended. We were willing to put them at berth two, but we're going to shift them back to berth four for this Saturday. The way the, the buses were just going to have a really tough time with some of the traffic plans that CECON was setting up. And it, it's just a much safer thing for the buses and the passengers in that to work out a berth four this Saturday. So when we make a berth assignment change like that, Cruise Line MC then notifies KVB and then KVB has a email list they all send out to everybody. So they're going to do that for a second tomorrow because this just came down late this afternoon. So this is the, the first real public announcement that we're making this change. So first ship out of the box and we're going, we're going to have some whaling and gnashing of teeth, but we'll, we'll deal with it, so.
So what we have is we have some unforeseen structural failures that they've got to, I guess, mitigate as they go through this and it's in the Vida portion?
Yes, sir. And, and they're going to close a, a good stretch of Front Street and to give access back into the back area, they're going to make Spruce Mill Way one-way in the wrong direction. And then what's also complicating this is that they're having a, the, the fire, firefighters and the police officers are having, something like on Saturday, they're closing Boden Street for about four hours for their, I forget the, what's the, what do they call that? Safety expo. They've done it for, I think, a couple of years now on that. So the whole thing just led to a berth four being the right thing to do.
Nick?
Yeah. I guess I heard about this this afternoon also, and, but what my concern is, what's the next week and the next week going to bring? And I think that our staff and CECON staff and the two bus companies, the big ones, need to have maybe some type of a get-together and make sure there is no more of these things we can't work out because pretty soon you don't have a choice. Two's going to be there, it's, it's only busy, it's, we, we just need to work it out so it's, before it's a problem. That's all I'm saying.
Councilmember Kuz, we will do that. But I can tell you, based on conversations I've had with the public works director, as this work progresses, CECON is finding things that were not represented on the plan. So they're being confronted with a change in conditions and it's going to be hard to plan with certainty between now and the rest of the season. So we'll do our best, but.
Oh, it might be a week at a time. I mean, I, I, I'm not saying it's going to be a week at a time. It may be, I mean, the whole season, it's going to be a week at a time possibly because we know what's going to happen.
We will, we will be in touch with both CECON, DOT, and the bus companies.
So Carl, do you think this is going to require any after-hour works past the normal construction in order to split it in? Because if they try to put it in a regular order business, it's just going to expand or?
I'm, I'm going to need to sit down with the public works director and the Porton Harbors director and we're going to have to have a conversation and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Again, with council's indulgence, Councilmember Bergeron, it would please me no end to give you a comprehensive upland improvements plan. We're not there. We did do some planning with Moffett and Nickel and, and we've got a good base of information there. Historic Ketchikan recently completed its waterfront development plan. We're, we're going to be using that. One of the things in the manager's report was one of our first incremental approaches dealing with the wayfinding. And if I could ask the assistant city manager to come up and explain our first bite at that apple in terms of trying to improve signage. So I'll defer to the assistant.
Thanks. Lacey Simpson, assistant city manager. So late last year, Carl and I started having conversations about some upgrades that we could do to the wayfinding signage throughout the downtown area to make it, to upgrade it, to make it more appealing, to make it function a bit better. And as you know, the wayfinding system is quite large. So taking the bite out of that apple just didn't seem plausible to get that underway and completed before the start of this visitor season. So I pulled together just sort of a staff-level committee with Porton Harbors director Steve Corperon and museum director Anita Maxwell. And we just sort of spun out some ideas of what we might like to do and decided that maybe a good pilot project would be to address one of the large directional maps along the berth. And we chose the berth two directional map because it's centrally located. This is the large directional map that's near the visitors bureau on the dock and near the rock. So it's centrally located, people are already congregating there. And we really just wanted to take a look at the map itself and the structure and figure out sort of a lower-cost way to adjust it to make a better impression of our town when people first get off, off the ships. And the smaller image there on the lower right is the sign as it exists currently. The map is very large, which is good, but it shows a very, very large area in rather small detail. We wanted to simplify that, focus on an area that was maybe about a five or 10-minute walking radius rather than showing the entire downtown area. Simplify some of the things that are on the map and pull out what I guess Anita was sort of calling anchor elements. So things like totem poles, thundering wings, creek street, things that are major attractors to pull people into the downtown area. So we have little inset photos for those images and a brief description. The map is smaller, but again, it's a much tighter view of downtown, really focusing on where people can travel on foot in about five or 10 minutes' time. We also wanted to deal with the structure itself because, as you know, those structures are just sort of galvanized steel bollards. They're not very attractive. I think there was a longer-term vision for those that didn't quite happen. So we're just going to be applying some weatherproof paint and we're replacing the top part of the sign. It's again, that dye bond. This is, I guess, to clarify, since we've been talking about signage all night, this is dye bonded and it is a vinyl applicant that's on it. So we can make changes to it, we can pull it off. If it gets damaged, it's relatively, even though it's large, we can replace it relatively easily and locally. That top part that now says welcome to Ketchikan instead of just Ketchikan with scratched-off paint is actually three-dimensional. So it's set off from the backboard a bit, so it gives it a little bit more punch and pop. And then for this sign, we were really wrestling with, well, okay, we've got, you know, four berths. How do we start to, you know, identify them? Are they going to be color-coded? Are they going to have different imagery? And we just sort of, for this pilot project, went with a simple Simon, a salmon icon and as you can kind of see over there on the left. And again, we reconfigured the map so that if you're looking at it staring back into town, the map is oriented that way. And then vice versa, if you're looking at the, the map and staring to the water, the town is now behind you on the map. So that's sort of the gist of it. We're hoping that this is a successful pilot project to, again, sort of improve the first impression that people have as they get off boats and see, where do I go? What do I do? We'll check back with the visitors bureau, who we did consult on this project. We also consulted with Stephen Reeve. And we wanted to maintain those districts in the downtown core, wanted to maintain their colors. They're all color-coded. So we shifted the colors ever so slightly so they're not quite so Crayola crayon box and made them a little bit more appealing. So we're hopeful that this will be a good start to revamping the signage in the downtown area.
Yep. The other thing I would note, Mr. Mayor, is we did put a designation above Austin Coast Guard Designated City on the map as well.
That is not shown on the, the left map, but it is actually on, on both maps. So, and this is again, just a start to that designation. We're now actually in a countdown period where we need to reapply for, for our designation, which is a good thing. And it might be nice to do a separate sign at some point down the road that celebrates the fact that we are a Coast Guard community a little bit more, but this was just a start to highlight that.
Thank you. Sam?
Thanks. I've been on a couple of cruises and the first thing that I do when I get off the boat is look to get as far away from everybody else that I'm cruising with as possible. So my, my first observation would be that it's great to have a sign that shows the immediate things that are within five or 10 minutes, but people like myself, I like to go for sixty, ninety minutes out. And so I'd like to come off, like, if I go into Jeno or Ketchikan, I'd like to see, where's the hiking trails? Where's the library? Where is the graveyard? Actually, when I travel, I love, especially in France and Paris, is to go through graveyards. You know, these are like, I know it sounds a little complicated, it's really, they're some of the most interesting places in the places that you visit. And so I, I like the sign, I like the approach. I just would like one right next to it that shows the things that are further out for folks like myself who want to get away from the downtown corridor and my fellow cruise passengers.
Sure. That's a really good point. And we actually did maintain the original map range on the little inset, which gives a slightly longer range and does include further away destinations like the library and I think even the start of the Rainbird Trail. The, the trouble with this that we're really wrestling with is someone is literally standing there looking at it. Are they going to retain, I need to go right and then I need to go left and then I need to go right because it's not, it's not mobile, it's not in their hands. So we really wanted to just, that's true. That's very true. So we wanted to just focus on.
I have a photograph of the wayfinding signs and I have it on my phone. So that there was another one that was a larger scale rather than an inset one. Again, I think that, you know, for me, when you, when you, when you get off these things, it's kind of like, it's, it's kind of like a survival thing. It's, you're trying to get away from everybody else and there's going to be a lot of other people that are going to be around that one, you know, on, on the near-term ones. And so I, I, you know, we, Ketchikan, you know, we talk about the uplands development or how we want to spread out the cruise passengers. I think that that just keeps them in one spot. So that's, that's my point. So I've said enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Great idea.
The last comment I had, Mr. Mayor, just pertains to the discussion of the library. I was here at the time, the council deliberated on, on the site selection and then ultimately the, the type of foundation that we... the, the type of foundation, uh, that we, we chose to undertake. Um, I'm not gonna dwell on it, I was not a fan of the site that was selected nor, nor, uh, the Public Works Director at the time expressed severe reservations about the, the, the site and what we needed to do, uh, relative to the foundation. I would disagree 100% with, with Mr. Westlin. That facility is, uh, something that this community should consider a, a community treasure, and I know it's gonna cost money to, to address the problem, but it, it's an asset very much worth saving, and, uh, it, I would hate for the community to look at the library as a liability because it's not, it, it is really a, a community asset, all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
I agree, I just would like to know what we could do to, so we don't have more sinking.
All right. Anything else or any questions under Councilmember Coos?
Manager's report.
Or manager's report, excuse me. Thank you, Sam. Okay, hearing none, we move down to, uh...
Uh, I have, I have one comment.
Okay, go right ahead.
Hey Carl, since, you know, we've been in the, the drought, you know, I've been going to the website, you know, it'd be absolutely great for people like me to see a graph on, on the inflows and the outflows of, of the dams, because every day I'm going to, you know, KPU Electric, go to the bottom, go to SEPA, I, I would like to see, um, how fast these things fill up. Yeah, I know that we use, it varies on how hard that we're, that we're using them, but still, I, you know, it's, it's, it's interesting to me.
To see how much rain we got?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm sitting, I'm looking out my window and it's just coming down in droves, I'm thinking, jeez, you know, the, our problems are over, but then I go to the website and I see, our problems are not over.
I will talk to the electric division manager and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Can we put a cam out there?
Um, anything else under manager's report? Moves us on to, uh, city clerk's files?
Your Honor.
City attorney's files.
Your Honor.
Uh, future agenda items. So we're gonna go to mayor and council member comments, and I'm gonna start with, uh, Mark, uh, he has a short report he's gonna give, I think, in regards to our, our visit, uh, with the cruise industry in Miami.
Okay.
If you would, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I sent this, uh, out to the council members already, but, um, this is something the public needs to hear. Um, so the mayor, both managers, Mr. Corperon, Mr. Coos and myself, went to the Sea Trade Conference, and where this little report's gonna come up short is, I can't relate on paper and reading, reading a three-page report, uh, the first-person impact that, I'm gonna speak for all of us here, that we had, meeting with port operators, cruise lines, people in other port communities, um, we've had some discussions recently about the game's kind of changing, and, and I don't think we, we really understood to what extent we, we went. The enthusiasm with which we have, uh, companies coming to us, asking us what we want, what they can do, is gonna be a unique opportunity, um, there are no ideal solutions, uh, so I'm gonna read this and I, I hope there's some, uh, benefit you folks can take away. "With the decline of our resource-based economy and closure of the mill, the city of Ketchikan continued to grow its tourist-based economy, particularly, particularly in regards to the cruise industry. Because of the established commitment to this industry and the investment that has already been made into the cruise industry, it is in the best interest of our, of our community to grow the cruise ship tourism economy. We are at a pivotal moment in our relationship with the industry regarding the benefits and impacts to our community. We currently carry debt on the port of $38 million that will not reach maturity until 2035. Annual debt service on the bond is over $2 million. The port debt is 23% of our total bonded debt and approximately 34% of our annual debt service presently. We are near our debt ceiling and our bond council has expressed concerns that our present debt makes us an unattractive candidate for future debt. Further debt allocated to the port may make it difficult to bond future needs such as water fil-, such as a water filtration plant. To maximize the return on our current and any future debt, the citizens of Ketchikan decide to take on, we must look at a sustainable growth model, model that provides the most benefit to the largest number of people residing in our community. As ships continue to grow and passenger counts increase, our port and adjacent upland areas have to grow with them in order to continue to be an attractive port of call for the cruise industry. The mayor, manager's, port director and two city council members attended the Sea Trade Global Conference for Education and to explore opportunities for potential investment and partnerships with the industry. After attending the conference, we are better prepared to provide additional information and possible paths forwards to the city council and community. Our group met with executives from Norwegian Cruise Lines, Royal Caribbean, Disney Cruise and MSC Cruises. The first three cruise lines already call on Ketchikan and MSC Cruises plan to enter our market in 2022. We also met with Global Port Holdings, a port operator company. Additionally, we met with several other companies specializing in uplands development and stevedoring, as well as municipalities facing many of the same challenges as Ketchikan. From our meetings with the industry, it is clear that we have an opportunity for significant investment from one or more companies in our port and community. There are multiple possibilities as to what the structure of the relationship will look like, and additional work is needed to arrive at our best option. We may choose to partner with one cruise line, multiple cruise lines or a port operator. The lines will desire preferential berthing. The operator will want to run the port operation. All the interested parties desire a timely decision in order to secure their interests in partnering with the city so that we are prepared to handle the neo-Panamax ships that are now calling on the Alaska market. It was made clear to everyone we met with that the process will be public in accordance with all municipal code. They were informed that a request for qualifications would be issued this fall and qualified parties would be asked to submit a request for proposals after that. The city also has criteria it seeks to fulfill, and these were clearly explained to all of the companies we met with. A successful outcome for our community would include the following. The port: expansion of berth one to accommodate larger ships with the future expansion of berth two factored into the design. Funding for the berths would come from outside investment and with no additional bonded debt placed upon this community. The city would retain ownership of the port and improvements. Uplands: a comprehensive uplands plan that would facilitate the efficient movement of cruise passengers off the dock and into the community. Infrastructure: improved infrastructure to support the increased number of visitors using our community's resources. A great visitor experience cannot be achieved if power, telecom, water, sewer, solid waste and roads cannot support the increased numbers. Investment into this area is needed as the port grows. Dockage and orphanage: an increase in the dockage and orphanage is long overdue, it has not been raised in 12 years, and an increase will be needed to support the maintenance of the port. Future increases tied to an inflation index will be built into the dockage and orphanage fees. Commercial passenger vessel, vessel tax: use of CPV funds or, or appropriate support, for appropriate support of the cruise passengers. As with infrastructure, there are expenses off the dock that need to be funded with reasonable accommodation of the use of CPV money will be essential. For example, if it were not for cruise passengers, we would not need crossing yards. Inclusivity: greater opportunity for locals to get into the industry. New excursions and destinations could mean more jobs and new businesses that could benefit from the growth of the cruise industry. Local hire, local purchase and a larger group of people who benefit from the community's largest growth industry are all part of a more holistic approach that, than we have had in the past. Environmental compliance: when we welcome someone into our home, it has to be with the understanding that all laws will be complied with and any errors remedied. Transparency: transparency in the public process that leads to the resulting plan is essential. The residents of our community deserve to have their questions answered and their concerns addressed. The foundation of a successful relationship will allow everyone to be heard, whether they are involved in the tourism business or not. Long-term sustainability: this plan has to look forward for years and the long-term benefit and consequences will affect our community for a very long time. Philanthropy: this part of our discussions was almost always brought forward by the industry. There is interest in looking at mechanisms where the industry can benefit those in our community who find themselves in less fortunate circumstances than others, as well as potential participation in our nonprofits. While this project must be transparent and will include community involvement, it must be stressed that time is of the essence and we must arrive at a decision in a very timely manner. The past estimate overrun has delayed this project and we are not able to lose any more time. In order to remain relevant as a desirable destination and secure the investment the industry wants to provide, we have to arrive at a plan and move forward efficiently. Ketchikan's a world-class cruise ship destination, the cruise ship industry has forever changed our town. There are many good things that come with that, there are other impacts to our town less desirable. As our relationship with the industry evolves, we are seeking avenues that ma-, maximize the economic and social benefits of the cruise industry while minimizing the less desirable impacts to, to our quality of life. Successful port expansion will provide the highest possible economic benefit to the greatest number of local residents. Not increasing the public debt is an essential aspect of this expansion. Preservation of our environment and keeping as much of our heritage and lifestyle intact is important. This is a generational decision and will influence our economy, identity and quality of life for your town. That's it, there was also input from others in the group, um, that helped me prepare this. Um, are there questions? I'm sure we'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Mark.
We have a question.
Okay.
Um, so while you guys are down there, there were several reports regarding, um, CLIA's dumping of waste and, uh, them being fined and the possibility of them being, uh, barred from docking.
Right.
So do we even have an idea where that is? Because personally, if you can't figure it out and by 2000, from 2006 on and all you keep getting fined for it and you continue to do it, maybe we need to put our foot down. I, I totally get the need for income, but what, at what cost to our community and our waters? Um, when you deliberately dump waste into Glacier Bay and other areas? So in keeping with this, um, in our environmental compliance, considering the fact that I find it really offensive that they pretty much lied to us, um, last year by saying they were following the rules and they were recycling, and then I read the report and the, uh, um, these shippers', um, lawsuits and different things that are going on and the fines that they were, have accumulated over the last, since 2006, they haven't been. So I don't know what was the top down there, but I'd real, I just, it really, I know it chapped a lot of people's backsides in Ketchikan when they saw that report in the Juno, uh, newspaper.
That came out, we saw that article the second to last day, you referring to Carnival Corporation, we had no meetings with Carnival Corporation.
Okay. If I can, Mr. Mayor, I think one of the other sentiments we heard from those who weren't affiliated with Carnival that this did nothing to advance the interest of the industry, that, uh, it was a, a setback, and they realized it and they realized they have a problem, uh, even though certain lines weren't involved, they're gonna have to pay a price, and they know it's gonna be an uphill climb, but, uh, they're committed to making sure that they follow through on the environmental end of things.
Thank you. Judy?
So we're committed then to have all of these meetings and discussions as much as possible in public, they won't be executive sessions?
That, that, that's correct.
Okay. I'm glad to do that.
We will start bringing the outlines of some decision-making, uh, decision-making trees, matrix, whatever you want to call it, uh, hopefully within the next couple of meetings, because there's some immediate decisions that have to be made, uh, once BNA finishes up what it's working on right now. We indicated in our discussions with industry that we wanted to get a request for qualifications, uh, out no later than October 1st. Seattle is going through a similar exercise right now, we have their RFQ, so we'll be able to use that as a, as a model for us and we're not gonna have to reinvent the wheel. But we need certain direction from the council before we can do that, so we're gonna start teeing those up for you as soon as we can.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Along that line too, Judy, there were talks with these folks, the suggestion came up that the industry come up here and, and speak to the community, it doesn't need to be, all of this stuff does not need to be filtered through the city council. So local folks that have questions, it looks like there very likely can be an opportunity to ask people of, of representative cruise lines or port operators what their concerns are and how they would be addressed first person.
Thank you.
Sam?
So, uh, this probably didn't come up in your, um, trip to Florida, but in today's paper, top of the fold was concerns about, um, sea pilots' ability to handle these mega ships that don't have isopods, they only have thrusters, and I was wondering, um, what the city's response was, Carl, maybe you can jump in on this one, or any chance that we could, what, what kind of say do we have in any of that?
I read the article you're referring to, I defer to the Port and Harbors Director, I know it's one particular ship of the neo-Panamax class that's of concern, I don't know if Steve's had discussions.
Port and Harbors Director Steve Corperon. Um, the studies that the sea pilots have, have done on the submarines and that, and then they sent a letter of recommendations to the captain of the port in Juno, uh, about a month ago. Um, I met with the captain of the port representatives today, uh, during our, um, semi-annual port security and safety meeting, and I asked them what, uh, captain of the port's intentions were with that, and they said that they were taking them under advisement, but they were just recommendations. It's, it's up to the sea pilots, or, you know, the individual pilot on each vessel as to what they're comfortable with. We have the right to refuse. Um, after the studies they did with the Bliss last year, uh, they'd set the limits at about 25 knots of wind for mooring at berth three, a, and I think about a half knot of current. So if I have no jurisdiction, I'm transiting through, between the airport and the, um, shipyard, which is one of the narrowest spots, uh, but if necessary, I can say that, uh, if it's, if I feel the conditions are such that they shouldn't be attempting a moor, we can say that, uh, we don't want them to moor. Uh, I never pulled that trigger before, uh, but it's something we, we can do if necessary.
Uh, yeah, it's, well, we all saw what happened to berth three when, when the large ship got out of control and...
It was blowing about 40 that day, so that's, I don't think they would, uh, attempt, uh, to put one of the neo-Panamax into berth three or berth four if it was blowing 40. They, they would most likely just go ahead and skip.
Thank you. Fred, Dick?
Yeah, just a comment on that ship they're talking about, I just spent a number of days on that particular ship and I've seen it in some a lot tighter places, and admittedly the weather will control whether they should stop or not, and that would be a call they'd have to make, but on a normal day in here, that ship's not gonna have a problem. And, uh, like I say, I've seen it, I've seen it, I watched it and I saw what they did with it, so it's probably a good concern if the weather conditions are wrong.
Janley?
I don't have anything to comment.
Dick, you have any final comments?
Um, it just, uh, I thank Mark for being willing to put that little thing together about the trip, because it... trip because it was, I think, a very worthwhile trip. What it cost us, we'll earn it back 10,000 times over with the cooperation I think we're going to get with these, these folks down there to talk to us, and it was, to me, it was all positive. I didn't really know what we might get when we went down there, but they're coming to us, we're not necessarily going to them, and I think we're in the driver's seat. We just need to keep it like Mark said, open, clearly the public to participate in what we come up with, and in the end, use their ideas, because there's going to be, it's going to be the docks, there's going to be uplands, and there may be other things. And they, they never hesitated on saying they weren't willing to help. So if we're, I think we're in the driver's seat, we need to ask for what we want and then see how the negotiations come out, but we're going to come out well, I think, and we'll keep, we'll keep the integrity of the community, and in the long run, we'll be ahead. So while in Miami, all the cruise industry individuals that we met with were excited about the Alaska market, and they were excited about being able to be a part of the investment in not only Ketchikan but in Alaska. We had an opportunity to talk with, as they talked about, a cruise industry group called MSC. They're not a Mediterranean, they're one of the, they're a privately-owned company, and they have a real strong growth in the cruise industry market, and they have the biggest share of ships being built in this year. And they're building a ship specifically for the Alaska market because they are concerned about the environmental issues, so they're looking at things like natural gas, lighter fuels, robust wastewater system, desalinizers, any of that kind of stuff that they can possibly do with the ship before they ever send it to the market. And that'll be a ship that they hopefully can get through the Panamanian health because they said it's going to, it may be a tight fit and they may have to go around. But everybody that we talked to was concerned about the environment in not only Alaska, but every place else, and they want to meet the standards. And there's, some of the people that we met with after hearing the information about the dumping of waste were just as appalled as we were. They didn't understand how anybody could go through that process, but... So I think that we really have an opportunity in front of us. It's going to move fast, and so we'll continue the discussions. I can't say enough about the contractor we have on staff and being able to set up meetings, steer the conversation, get us into the right room, and the wealth of experience they have in the after meetings, after we talk to somebody to try to break down exactly what went on. Very positive group and well-respected in the industry. Some of the people that we met with said, your engineering group is our engineering group, I'm going to be able to use the same one, because they're, they're a global operation with a good reputation, so I think it's a great opportunity for us to sell Ketchikan and meet with the industry. That's all I have. Anything else?
One quick comment on the water utilization report. There were some rather large statistical anomalies and a couple of water users. What's the plan with that? Like, one house used like 190,000 gallons, a ridiculous amount?
That's a ton.
So are they bottling and selling it, or what, you know, so?
I had an opportunity, I spoke with Carl a little bit about it, and I also had the opportunity to talk to Seth Raky with the water division and the people that manage that complex that they're contacted, and if they, they're going to look after this house, then they'll have the water department first of all. But, you know, some of those things, you look at them, they double, an individual house using 14,000 to 17,000 gallons of water a month, there's something haywire going on there. And then we have some usage even in regards to berths at the shipyard where they jump from, you know, 10,000 gallons up to 265,000 gallons because of the boadath, exactly what that means. So I think overall, you know, those numbers seem big, but in the amount of water that we use all year long, it's fairly small, but I think now we've got to start conserving and looking at that with this drought issue, all those little ones that we can take care of will certainly help us out. So that's where we're at with that, I guess, yeah.
And under, do we already do council member comments?
Yeah, I think we just went, kind of went through that. If you have something else, please add it.
I, I just wanted to say that I felt that the trip to Florida was very beneficial in the best interest of the city. Mark, I really appreciate the report, coming back with that, giving us an idea what we're going to take with that information that we learned down there and make some new connections. I think it's a very important thing that we did, and I think I'm very supportive of it, and thank you for the great inform. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Julie.
Yeah, I just wanted to mimic Dick's comments in regards to Mark's letter. I really appreciated that update. I, I had a quick question. Mark, did you guys meet with anybody from Carnival?
We did not.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. I heard you say several. All right, thank you, and that's it.
Judy.
I want to thank Julie for her service. I understand you will be at the next meeting, so that's great. I also, if anybody's watching out there that has a remote interest in being a city councilperson, it's good work.
Everybody likes reading.
It's really good work, and I think that...
I like to read a lot.
You know, Mark was a school, I mean, a councilperson. And because of that pick, he then chose to run for his term, and he's proven to be a very valuable member of our council, I believe. That's probably the only... I also want to bring up a tickler system or some kind of a system that as council people, sometimes we, we're up here, we talk about things, and I go home and I have written it on a notepad, and then I forget about it. Today, I remembered a couple of things and wrote to people, Mark was one of them, just about the properties that we have. I don't know if that kind of thing belongs under unfinished business, but because it's not, I mean, it is unfinished business, but there might not be a report available right then. Just something to remind us that we have these things on our agenda coming up, or that maybe we want to just remind ourselves that we need to look at that, different things a little closer. Also, I have some questions on diesel surcharge, and mostly as it pertains to commercial businesses. So I have a couple of places where I'm only charged $40 for electricity, but my diesel surcharge is over $300. So I just, I don't know, I'm going to need a little bit more help. I have had a couple of other businesses call me wanting to know how we come up with that, so maybe if somebody could give me some direction on that, not necessarily tonight, but call me tomorrow so that I can pass that information on. I'd appreciate it. On, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. We did have a SEPA meeting today. We talked about long-range operating plans, what that looked like. It was a very good document that we previewed, we discussed, we asked for a few changes and stuff, and when that comes back, Carl, I think we probably just pass it on to the council members and we get a final draft of that. Well, that brings us to the, to the final one of the evening. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
A motion to adjourn.
Executive session, sir.
No executive session, no. We could carry that with us, yeah.